Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today, Tuesday, October 19th, 2021 at 5:31 PM. May I please have a roll call?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Carrots.
I believe he is absent.
He's absent. Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Tye-Pen-Serga.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. I'll ask everyone to please rise for invocation led by Pastor Bender of Christ Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Pennsurgah.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be a part of what you're doing, and we pray that you would give wisdom and discernment to all of the leaders of Boynton Beach, that you would give great clarity, and that you would have ours be a community that is marked by our love for one another. Help us to know what that looks like. Help us to have the wisdom to know what to do next, how to steward the resources you place in our hands. We thank you for how good you are, and we praise you. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to agenda additions, deletions, or corrections. Crystal, I know that you made some changes since the agenda was published. Do you mind informing the public of what those changes were?
Yes, Mayor. Just one moment to make sure I don't overlook anything.
You want me to do it, Crystal?
Yes, please.
Okay. We added an announcement under announcements for John Durgan to update us on. We had what we hope is a very successful job fair last week, and we wanted to let you know how that went. We removed the closed door that was canceled on the JKM Town Square issue. We added language to the settlement matter under legal with a better definition. It didn't get printed on the agenda, although on the agenda cover, so we wanted to make sure it was on the public agenda. Your city manager, when she entered her item under city manager's report, didn't assign a meeting, so it went out to novice land and didn't get printed. So we got it on there to request the ARPA workshop date reschedule. And I think I got it all.
All right. And the only other change that I have is regarding item 6i to 7d as the amount is over $100,000. It's a grant that we're not, I thought.
It's not an actual purchase, right.
But so we're not spending $400,000?
Not this.
Okay.
Andrew, speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, I raised the same thing when I was reviewing it.
Sorry. So that item is actually a grant contract award, so it's not actually obligating us to any purchases or bids. Okay, thank you. Then I will remove that request. And so may I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving forward for informational items by members of the City Commission, Commissioner Romulus, would you like to begin?
Mayor, I have nothing to disclose at this time. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Pennsurgah?
Nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. Vice Mayor?
No disclosure. Just like to say that, again, I enjoyed working with the PDM South Florida for the last couple of weeks.
As for myself, on October 7th, I attended the National Day for the Republic of China. On October 8th, I spoke with representatives of JKM Development. On October 13th, I had a meeting with the Police Benevolent Association in regards to the Citizens Review Board. I've been requested by the Palm Beach County Justice Association to review language that they would like to submit to different municipalities regarding a Citizens Review Board. My comments on that is that it was extremely negative in the sense that it was only looking to find fault in the police department rather than trying to create a better understanding of the crime and police within the community. After having a discussion with a couple of members of the police department, I'll try to put out our future agenda to have a discussion, because what I would like to see is a citizen advisory board with the police in the sense that not to interfere on the internal affairs of when a police officer does something wrong, but if there's something that a police officer does that people don't like, that we have a place to discuss it in a manner. Plus, I would want to have the crime statistics open to the public rather than just on a website, so that the public gets a little bit more involved on a quarterly basis. And the last thing is that the ability for the police, for the public to commend the police that are doing a great job, because we normally hear about the one time out of 90, out of 100 that something wrong happens, but not the 99 times that something right happens. So this is kind of an open discussion that I think would move the city in the right direction, because one of the things that we are facing here as well as nationally is a lack of applicants to the police. And so that is something that I would want to have this Citizens Review Board to help the youth be encouraged to join the police rather than it being only hearing the negativity. So I'll make that comment at the end of the meeting. On October 14th, I attended the Somerset Academy's opening of their new football field and was there that evening at the Boynton Beach Community High School's football game. In the morning, I attended a photo shoot or a video shoot for the Ocean Breeze East after winning awards for the Florida Redevelopment Agency Association. On October 15th, I attended the Children's Schoolhouse Museum and was there for their new exhibits. My daughter went to the toddler play area, and she had an amazing time. So I would encourage all parents with toddlers to go check that area out. On the 16th, I attended the Fall Festival, and we had a little bit of problem. There was almost no parking left, that it was so well-attended. And so that may mean we need to either figure out what to do for parking if we want to keep it at the interest of Coastal Park or move it to another location for greater parking ability. And today, I attended the County Commission meeting, and there was the COVID-19 update, and the County Commission effective immediately ended their emergency declaration for COVID-19. Later on this afternoon, I attended the South County Intensive over at the old South Tech Academy, and I'll be hopefully advocating for funds for that high school and location, because it is, you know, not necessarily conducive for students' learning, the maze that they put them through, literally. In addition, someone informed me, and I was glad to see the Miami Herald or Miami New Times article of that Boynton Beach is the first city to enter into the plant-based treaty. So that's something that I'm excited about. This month, I've been doing my best to eat as a vegetarian, and I encourage other people. And so that is something that hopefully our Sustainability Department can inform the public in that we are more environmentally friendly with all of our decisions. And the last thing is, is that I got an email from Waterston Company called Anis Coal USA from Hollywood, Florida, because I still want to get that update regarding the, our freshwater canals and lakes. Is that currently in the works? We're waiting for the last set of samples. We should have that information. Okay, great. So yeah, I'm very excited to, not excited, but hopefully we'll learn a better idea of what's going on in our freshwater canals. And that is it for my informational disclosures. And saying no more, we will begin with announcements, community, and special events and presentations. The first is November 1st, 2021, is Extra Mile Day. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas the City of Boynton Beach is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Boynton Beach encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas the city chooses to shine a light on the, and celebrate individuals and organization within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of the community. And whereas Boynton Beach acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and its proud support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Whereas in the City of Boynton Beach, Alan Carjane Leanyan has gone the extra mile by providing crucial information technology support by keeping our servers safe, implementing innovative ideas, and running virtual City Commission meetings. Thank you for your service to the City of Boynton Beach. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021, as Extra Mile Day and encourage each individual in the community to take time on this day not to only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, family, community, country, and world a better place.
And Allen, Mayor Allen's sister and daughter are here to accept the proclamation tonight. They'd like to come up.
Yes. So the reason why I chose Alan Carjane Leanyan for the extra mile is because of last year, all the hours that he spent to make sure that the city was safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. When I realized that we didn't also have, everyone in the City of Boynton Beach did not have an opportunity to attend our meetings virtually. In August of 2021, with his assistance, we were able to have the public meetings at our community rooms. He was there when we had our meetings to 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, and making sure that the public was able to use their First Amendment right to petition the government. With that, you know, speaking with Yuri and John McNally, he is a pivotal role in what made, which made sure that the city was safe during the pandemic. When everyone got to take home laptops, had access to our servers remotely, he was one of those peoples to make sure that we did, we were doing the best that we can. To speak to him personally, he is just an amazingly nice person. He always had a smile on. He was always helpful. And whatever troubles or missteps that happened, he was there to solve them and make sure that we were being the best city that we can be. And so it is with, you know, huge condolences that we lost him through COVID-19. And I was pleased that the city manager was able to have a little celebration of life here at our community room. And I feel hopefully that, you know, we can do more to honor him. Hopefully, we can use some of our sustainability fund to plant a memorial tree in his honor, and so.
And that is in the works, Mayor.
Yeah, so that's in the works?
Yes, sir. The tree and potentially a bench.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next proclamation is October 15th, 2021, is White Cane Safety Day in recognition of the growing independence and self-sufficiency of blind people in America and to recognize the white cane as a symbol of that independence and self-reliance. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen in our city has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane allows every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place and makes it possible for the blind to participate and contribute to our society. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane or guided by a guide dog. And whereas Florida law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach and our business community with the cooperative assistance of the Lighthouse for the Blind of the Palm Beaches can look forward to a continued expansion of employment opportunities and greater acceptance of blind purses in the competitive labor market. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, to hereby proclaim October 15th, 2021, as White Cane Safety Day in Boynton Beach and call upon all, call upon our schools, colleges, and universities to offer full opportunities for training to blind purses, upon employers and the public to utilize the available skills of competent blind persons and to open new opportunities for the blind in our rapidly changing society, and upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as an instrument of safety and self-help for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways today and every day.
All right. Right here. Oh, I found the microphone. Okay, so my name's Ted Goodenough, and I won't give my long title, because I did that last time and almost ran out of time. But Mayor Grant, thank you very much for your time today. Commissioners, city manager. Actually, Mayor Grant stole a whole lot of my, what I was going to talk about. But I did bring with me, I have my guide dog, Rosie, and I did bring a white cane in case people don't know what they look like. This is pretty much it, white with a red tip generally, and a golf club, so if you play golf, you can use one of these. But I did want to talk about a couple of things. In my life, and I've got a couple of years behind me, the things that have happened because people aren't white cane safety aware. I had one person accidentally, while they were texting, distracted walking, kick my cane down into a 50-foot ravine. Okay, so now how am I going to get home? Because I don't have my tool anymore. And then I had another person who was late for a class in college who jumped over my white cane and broke it. So it was dangling on the end, and then she said, "Do you want some duct tape?" "No, I want the $40 for the cane you just broke." And then, of course, with Rosie, if I'm walking and I come to an intersection or a place to cross the street, and there's a guy over here with a leaf blower and one over there with a weed whacker, and a guy behind me who's mowing the lawn, I have no clue whether there's a car coming. So it's important that cars, drivers, take a moment to think about, "Oh, could that be a person with a white cane?" And right now, I'm, I have a guide dog and a white cane, so it's suspenders and a belt. But, you know, just take a moment, because it is the law. As Mayor Grant mentioned, it's the law that you, that you give a person with a white cane or a guide dog the right of way. And it means a lot to us when people actually do take the time to say, "Oh, I have a minute. I can do this." And when they don't, it's kind of scary. You know, if I'm crossing on traffic that's going to, from my left to my right, and I go out, Rosie's going to get killed. And if I'm on the other side, then I'm going to get killed, and Rosie's going to be really mad at me. But it's important. It's not just important on October 15th. It's important every single day that you take the time to think about others. And, you know, it's just one of those things that could make my life and the many others who have visual impairments or blindness, it can make their day. Thank you for your time tonight. "No, you got it. You got your cane. You don't, you don't need me."
Is that Rosie?
That's Rosie. Yeah, she was sleeping behind me.
Ted, and I want to thank you for all that you do for the city. And one of the things that we're trying to do in the city is to increase the traffic calming measures so that everyone can feel safe, whether they are walking or riding their bike. You know, what we're planning for Boynton Beach Boulevard, with it being calming a complete street with wide sidewalks, it's something that we're hoping that the county and the state catch on, because it's important not just for cars to get, to be able to move it throughout the city. We need to make sure that pedestrians and bicyclists have that same ability to remain safe.
Absolutely. I agree.
Our third proclamation for the month of October is National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month. The proclamation will be accepted by Dr. Elsa Degoyes, Manager of Programs for Career Source Palm Beach County. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas October 2021 marks the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and to celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month traces back to 1945, when Congress enacted a law declaring the first week in October each year National Employ the Physically Handicapped Week. And whereas in 1988, Congress expanded the week to a month and changed the name to National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach places to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and invent individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Is Dr. Degoyes here or virtual?
Good afternoon, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dr. Elsa Degoyes, and I have the pleasure and the honor to lead disability services at Career Source of Palm Beach County. And one of the things I want to say, I want to thank all of you here, starting with Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor Woodrow, our commissioners, and our city mayors, and everyone present, because we every day work very closely together. As I'm looking at Stephanie, I want to thank her for working very closely with us to partner to actually have individuals become self-sufficient and independent every day of their lives. So we actually not only work this month, but we work tirelessly every month, every day of the year to become a partnership, and this partnership is amazing. So thank you so much for being such a great partner with Career Source and allowing us all together as a team to put many people back to work. So thank you so much for your time.
And, you know, I want to thank Career Source for all their help with our career fair and education last Thursday. I was able to attend. It was an amazing fair. We had so many different employers available, and so I'm looking forward to the announcement at the end to hear how it went.
It was a wonderful success, and I'll wait till John tells you more about it. But it was a great team, and that was what it was all about. Thank you for allowing me to work with your teams.
Thank you. And, you know, it's also in the sense is that if nobody knows about the Palm Beach Habilitation Center. And so the Palm Beach County does have multiple facilities for people with disabilities to find employment, to become self-sufficient. And thank you. And if anyone has any questions, they should contact Career Source. Is that correct? All right, thank you. Okay, so if we could make sure that that's on the website so people know who to contact. Our next proclamation for October 23rd, 2021, is the First Presbyterian Church of Boynton Beach Garden dedication. Reverend Emily Ash of First Presbyterian Church Church will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas in October of 1955, a small group of dedicated Christians decided that there was a need for a Presbyterian USA church in the growing community of Boynton Beach. The first worship was held in the Women's Club on November 6th, 1955, with an attendance of 46 people. And whereas the church needed a home of its own in 1940, 1958, the present five-acre site at 235 Southwest Sixth Avenue was acquired and a groundbreaking ceremony for a sanctuary was held on January 25th, 1959. Over the next 12 years, the site expanded to include nursery facilities, classrooms, a library, fellowship hall named Pratt Hall, Office, and Chapel. And whereas the elders of the 1981 session and the Women's Association also envisioned a garden in the center of the church property that would serve as a place for reflection and respite for all who are weak and heavy laden, or to simply enjoy the beauty of the earth. In 2020, the elders of the session of First Presbyterian Church of Boynton Beach and the congregation began a successful journey to raise funds to create a garden as the forefathers envisioned. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, on behalf of the City of Boynton Beach, to hereby thank the First Presbyterian Church of Boynton Beach for their efforts to increase the city's green canopy and for their contribution to the overall well-being of our community and proclaim October 23rd, 2021, the First Presbyterian Church of Boynton Beach Garden dedication and invite our community to visit the garden often and to take time to rest and reflect on the beauty of God's earth.
I'd like to thank Mayor Grant, the commissioners, and the city manager for this. We have a commitment at First Presbyterian Church, which is in District 3 and located in Forest Park neighborhood, to the city's sustainability and greening of the city and to the Canopy Committee. And so we hope that you will all feel welcome, that you can come and sit and reflect. There is also the Peace Pole that used to be at the Senegal up in Lantana is also part of it. So it has history, it has reflection, it has water features, and it has shade. You're all welcome. Thank you so much to the city.
And Reverend Ash, I also heard, you know, on the Sunday, October 24th, you're having a concert.
Yes, the Gold Coast Orchestra will be presenting their first concert on our patio.
And that will be at 3:00 PM?
I think so, yes.
Okay, so yes, I encourage everyone who has not come and heard the Gold Coast Band, and for all of us who have, to come to First Presbyterian Church at 3:00 PM. I believe this is a free concert, accepting donations, though.
We always accept donations. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we will proclaim the week of October 18th to the 24th, 2021, as Florida City Government Week. Commissioner Tyne Penzergo will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to an understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share responsibility to pass along the understanding of public service and their benefits. And whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word of all, to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, proclaim the week of October 18th to the 24th, 2021, as Florida City Government Week. And encourage all citizens, city government officials and employees to participate in events that recognize and celebrate Florida City Government Week. The city also encourages educational partnership between city government and schools, as well as civic groups and other organizations. Furthermore, the city supports and encourages all Florida city governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Government Week.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I happily accept this proclamation, but when I think about it, I feel like the real people that should be accepting this is our staff. You know, this is government week. And what I want the people to know is that there are so many people behind the scenes working real hard to make things happen. Government is a difficult beast, as we know. It is a complicated machinery, and it is a difficult ship to steer, if we use that analogy. But I want the public to know, one, we need to acknowledge and appreciate all of our city employees, and two, and this is something that I did not know growing up, that there are these careers in city government, because there's so many ways to serve. It's not just running for office. Running for office is one way, but you can impact your city, your communities by also being part of the city staff or the county staff. And so I want to thank our staff for everything they've done, from our managers and supervisors and employees, and also the partnerships they've created with our local nonprofits. And also the video series that discuss getting to know our employees. What exactly does Public Works work on? What exactly do these officers encounter on a day-to-day basis? So thank you for everything you've done, and we could not do what we do without all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Now we will announce the Solid Waste Division will be having Tire Amnesty Week.
Evening, Mayor Grant, Commissioners, my colleagues and members of the public. My name is Mario Guzman. I'm the Director of Public Works. And as noted, it would be a, it's gonna be Tire Amnesty Week November 1st through the 5th. The tires will be picked up, up to eight tires with or without rims, and it'll be picked up on your bulk day. Fun fact, according to the Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries, we can lower our carbon footprint and save about 18 gallons of gas for every four tires that we recycle. So just little tidbit information.
And I did have a question, because I know that we have Tire Amnesty Week. You know, I'd like to see if we can do other things regarding, you know, old appliances or electronics, because, you know, I see the pickup truck that comes and gets the, the tires. And, you know, I feel that it would be, you know, the tires have, are recyclable, they're, you know, cleaned and turned into a lot of different fuels once the metal is taken out of them. Uh, and so that's something that hopefully Public Works will take a look into to see about having, uh, not necessarily an amnesty week, because people can throw away their electronics at any time. However, they're supposed to dispose of it at the Lantana site, if I'm not mistaken. So if we can help facilitate the, that sort of thing, and I would say kind of like the first or second week in January, after most people buy their new electronics for the holiday season in December, to see if we can't do a pilot program, to see if people who, who want to recycle their electronics, because we're talking a lot of glass and other, and metals, that I believe we can, if we get enough of them, find someone who would want them for value.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely bring back the staff and maybe initiate some kind of pilot program or whatnot. And correction, I said bulk. It's your vegetation day is when we're gonna pick up the tires. Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have an announcement of public meetings for the American Rescue Plan Act and Florida International University Community Needs Assessment by David Scott, Director of Economic Development and Strategy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is David Scott, and I'm the Director of Economic Development and Strategy for the City of Boynton Beach. We wanted to announce and remind everyone about a few meetings that we have coming up. This is the second meeting of the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, public meeting, public input meeting, will be held Thursday, October 28th, 6:00 PM, at Fire Station 3, 3501 North Congress Avenue. This will be an in-person meeting, in-person only. And so we ask and invite all of our public to attend. The second meeting that we will have will be focused on ARP nonprofit. Now, we're having a nonprofit public meeting that will be Monday, November 1st, 6:00 PM, right here in the commission chambers, and virtual on GoToWebinar. So we're inviting our public to participate in that as well. That one will be focused again on nonprofits. The third announcement that we have is regarding our FIU Racial Social Equity Project. We've continued to conduct our public and community assessment. We've gone through several stakeholder meetings. We've had focus group meetings. Now we're rolling out our public input meeting and asking our public to, to attend. So the FIU Racial Social Equity Community Assessment Public Input Meeting will be held Wednesday, November 3rd, 6:00 PM, right here in the commission chambers. That will also be virtual and in-person. So anyone that's interested in attending virtually, we'll be able to log on to GoToWebinar, register on GoToWebinar. So with that, we do, continue to invite our public to participate in all of our projects. We look forward to their input, and we continue to collect that. Thank you.
So, yep, we've got some questions for you, David. Vice Mayor?
I am supportive of the American Rescue Plan Act. We'd just like to let the public know that no idea is a bad idea. We want your input. This is your opportunity to come and let us know what you see that the city needs. Uh, I, I'm not gonna say every idea will be implemented or accepted, but we'll give you a reason why, why not, we can't go that direction, because there are stipulations that have been set by the government, that we must follow those guidelines. But we do want to encourage you, whatever your ideas are, please come out and let us know. Thank you.
Commissioner Penzergo?
Thank you. David, for the sake of the public and for future people that might be attending, could you just describe what it is exactly that you are looking for from them more specifically?
Certainly, on the, for the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, the city has received, uh, received funding to support programs around COVID-related issues. So the, on March 11th, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law and included a bill that provided $350 billion to communities. The City of Boynton Beach received a first deposit of six million, $6.8 million out of a $13 million allotment. We are looking for input as to how we should spend that money within the Treasury rules and regulations. So if we come to that meeting, we'll explain really in more detail exactly what is required, what can, it can be spent on. Or you can go onto our website, which has a American Rescue Plan Act page, where you can get that information as well. But we, as Vice Mayor mentioned, we continue to collect the information, ideas. What do you think we should be spending this money on? What's important to you? We really focus on those community issues that will benefit our community and make us a better place. We've had several ideas that have come forward. Some are kids programs, some are mentoring programs, things like that, really are focused on those communities that have been disproportionately impacted by COVID. So those are those communities that have lost jobs, have food insecurities, have income insecurities, or really in those areas that are disadvantaged. So we really invite any and all comments, and we really will, will certainly consider those. And I will also add that it's not just those communities, those, it's really all communities. So we also understand seniors have been negatively impacted by COVID. So we've had some recommendations and suggestions around senior health programs or mental health programs. So any, as Vice Mayor mentioned, and as you, Commission has also directed us, any and all ideas on how we can make it, how we can make ourselves whole as, in response to COVID are open ideas. And the second item, which I mentioned, which was the FIU Community Assessment, really is looking at, uh, over a year ago, the Commission asked us to put together a task force. How do we address and close the equity gap around racial and social equity? So we engaged FIU as our data partner to bring that information together. We assembled a couple of stakeholders meetings around five focus area, education, public safety, housing, economic development, and, and the fifth one, I'm sorry, just drew a blank, um, public health, I'm sorry, public health was the last one. So around those five focus areas, we've really put together these stakeholders group, which includes the community, professionals in those areas, as well as different agencies that serve the community in those specific focus areas. They have now gone through those stakeholder meetings. They've had two public focus group meetings, and they've gathered that input. They are now finalizing the recommendations that will come back to this, to this commission on what that looks like. How do we close the equity gap based upon the data that they're finding? And some of that data, I think the city manager has shared in previous conversation, they are really clear on the inequities that have happened or have occurred within the city or that exist based upon data out there. You see, African Americans are really lagging when it comes to economic prosperity within the city, and you'll see that in the data that comes from our census information as well. And we look at strategies on how to close that gap. Those recommendations will include, and I may be precluding some of the FIU conversation when they do come back to you and make their presentation, but just as an advance information, we're looking at how, how strategies around, and you'll hear the next one, uh, job fairs. How do you connect people to jobs? So those are some of the recommendations. So I appreciate Commissioner the opportunity to speak, and you probably didn't ask me to speak that long about the project, but I'm very passionate about both of these, so I'm excited to be here and I thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, Vice Mayor, David, you're not done yet.
Just, um, we, we've had, we have such a good-looking crowd here tonight, and I, I think we've gotten smarter and smarter each day about the opera. And I would like to have you or Karisse, just tell her those things that we cannot entertain with those funds. I know that we're still looking at some things, but there are some that are obvious that we cannot go in that direction. I think we should share that with everyone that's here tonight, if, if we could do that.
Well, I don't know if Karisse is a, is Karisse?
Karisse, can you pull that from the top of your head?
Yes, yeah.
I don't wanna put you on the spot.
I can name a few, but I'll let the experts speak to that.
Pay off debt, I know, that's one of them.
Yes, one.
Pay off debts.
Yeah.
Has to be pandemic-related.
And assist populations that were hit the hardest.
This is our expert.
It's like 150-page rule, so no one's gonna have it memorized, but, and she's probably the only one that would read it.
Um, Karisse Lejeune, consultant to the City of Boynton Beach. There are some very specific things that cannot be done, and most of those were addressing the city. You could not use that to pay any kind of debt, whether it was a bond or a loan or anything like that. You, you could not use that to supplement your ad valorem tax revenues. But rather than looking at what you can't use it for, I think it's important that we try to find out what we can use it for. And as David was saying, the, one of the focuses of the City of Boynton Beach, and I'm very, very proud to, to be your consultant in that project, is that we're looking at the disproportionately impacted communities of the city due to COVID-19. I think that's important work, and staff has come together with some programs and the input, the public input that we're doing, and our next one is on the 28th, that's Station, Fire Station Number Three. I would encourage everyone to come there, because taking what the city has done so far and looking at the FIU study and their recommendations, what the community will then bring us, we're going to fit into that like pieces of the puzzle. So a lot of what the community has been identifying themselves as needs to, to find economic prosperity and to come out from under COVID, we believe that that's going to mesh very closely with what FIU has done as recommendations. And from there, staff will be able to recommend programming and projects to this commission going forward. So if everyone would come to Station, Fire Station Number Three on the 28th, you'll be able to see the same presentation that was given, not only to the commission, but to folks at our last public input meeting, and that will answer the question. And everything that you're asking me is gonna be on a big slide on the wall.
And, and it's on our website, too, the, the categories.
Yes.
Pretty simple to, you know, they, they break it out very nicely of what, it's very broad, it's, it's recovering from COVID, any type of activities to help people from mental wellness to education, catch up and food insecurity, financial, it, it's hugely broad. There's probably 10 times more of what we can do than what we can't do. It really is really broadly written to allow us to be, to have some great flexibility, which is exciting. It's really kind of the first time we've ever had anything like this, so.
If, if there's going to be a rule of thumb, and maybe that's what you, what you were looking for, Commissioner, if there's a rule of thumb, it can only be to address issues created by COVID. It has to be a direct consequence of the impact from COVID. So we're not looking at, you know, economic development, that's not something that we're doing. We're trying to isolate the impacts and negative impacts from COVID and mitigate and find solutions to bring people back up and lift them higher.
So, no, I'd, I'd like to ask a question. The, the aspect of the ARPA survey that we currently still have on our website, is that correct? When will that close?
Never, not while we're doing the part.
David Scott, our intent is to keep that open and continue to collect information, probably up until the Commission's workshop, whenever that occurs, as soon as that occurs.
And so part, you know.
And I would, I would also add that we probably decide, and the Commission can certainly direct us on that, to keep it open, because there is a round two of ARP money. So we will probably keep that open and to continue to collect ideas.
Okay, and so I've taken the, that survey, and, you know, the survey monkey gives us the results of all that have been going on so far. Is that something that we could put up on the website? You know, what is, how? You know, what is, how things are currently ranked in the city? So that the, the public gets a better idea of what, you know, so far it is. And so if they feel like that is correct, that they can continue that, if they feel that something else should be higher. You know, we want to do things to get more input and having a, you know, a result sort of thing that people know where they are, I feel is very informative to the public.
John Dergan and I are working on taking that survey information out of Survey Monkey and whatever we could pull out, we could post on the website.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then the other thing is that is FIU doing a survey as well or just?
Yes, they will do a survey as well.
Okay, so and then we'll have access to that, to promote that survey as well.
Correct.
Okay. Those are the questions of Commissioner Penzerga.
Yes, I have a question for Karis. I'm sorry, Karis, you admitted so far. You know, one of the things that have been mentioned is, you know, there is a great deal of leeway here. And I've read the law, the law is quite broad on this. And most of the specifics that we've seen are actually coming from the treasury, not the law itself. My question is, who becomes the arbiter of, of these gray area projects? Something that's in the middle? What's the difference between economic development is a no, but economic recovery is a yes? For example, how would that work? Do we submit projects to the treasury? And if it's not applicable, they'll, they'll do what? How does, what's the process for that?
Right, there's, there's several different ways to make sure that we're bringing forward projects and programs that meet the requirement of the treasury. Their, their final rule, the interim final rule, IFR, is very, there are gray areas, but for the most part, it's pretty explicit. The treasury has also put out several FAQs that answers a lot of questions. We have the ability to contact the treasury with any questions, specific questions that we have.
Excellent.
The National League of Cities has a pipeline to the treasury. We've been going through them to get our questions answered. And there's also the E311 Bloomberg Group who has also been helping us to get our questions answered by the treasury. As far as the final decision, let's say, for example, we put forward a project or a program that the treasury deems is not a, a fundable project. They will let us know. And there may be a situation where we would have to reimburse them for, for monies if we do something that's not part of the acceptable programs and projects.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Okay.
Now, that's important for us to know what exactly that process is so we don't cross that boundary with so many gray areas. And, and to be honest, you know, I think we've all seen some articles of how other cities have used their funds. And I'm thinking to myself, how do they do that? How do they make that allowable? But perhaps it's those gray areas, but thank you, Karis.
You guys can walk away now. No, we're coordinating here. I just wanted to add Commissioner that I would ask Karis, please. There's also the auditing, so those cities that have presented ideas or thoughts or put forward projects that may or may not fit or will be audited on a regular basis. So we want to be very careful about what we put forward and what we spend our money on.
Either treasury or some third party. Did you mean the treasury?
Don't we submit our quarterly report to the treasury?
Directly to the treasury.
Timeframe that they review. If they have concerns or questions, they come back to us. We have so much time to respond back to them. And then at the end of the day, it's their call.
Okay.
And they will make a decision, I think it's within 90 days or days of once we submit that. So it isn't, a lot of people at the beginning were very concerned about, hey, are you going to come? Prima, 10 years later, we're still trying to close hurricanes out and things change and they're, and oh yeah, that was reimbursable at one point, now it's not, we want the money back. And people worried about the clawback. This sounds like the process is pretty, they're going to move on it pretty quickly. Review your projects, if they have issues, they address it then. We understand, I won't say they won't come back by, but at this point, people understand that they're going to catch it early on if there's issues by the treasury and get it addressed. But that's why a lot of people are moving, we're moving cautiously because there's, like you said, multiple interpretations of different things that we are hearing. And I think at the end of the day, it's the treasury's call, but that's a little scary. We don't want to get in a situation where we owe back millions of dollars.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last announcement for the evening is the Project Impact Job Fair results by John Dergan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner John Dergan, Economic Development Manager. I just want to provide a brief update to the job fair that we held last Thursday, October 14th, at our Arts and Cultural Center from 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM. We had over 205 job seekers participate in the event. 21 employers and five educational partners were also in attendance. I did want to start off by thanking Dr. DeGhost and Yahara and the entire Career Source team for all the hard work and effort they put into making this job fair a success. They did a phenomenal job in making Project Impact, the Project Impact Job Fair an absolute success. And with the success of this event and the number of employers who contacted either myself or Career Source who wanted to participate, but they were unable to due to scheduling conflicts, we're considering the idea of hosting a job fair on a quarterly basis. So we're able to connect job seekers to employers right here in Boynton Beach. Again, I do want to thank the Recreation and Park Staff for accommodating and setting up the job fair for Career Source, they did a phenomenal job. And also our marketing team, they did a phenomenal job of marketing and promoting this event, which is a direct correlation of how successful it was. And I do want to pass it over to Dr. DeGhost from Career Source just to briefly talk about the next steps and follow up process for those job seekers.
Thank you, John. I actually want to piggyback on what John said. It was phenomenal, we had an amazing team effort. And they're very humble, but I want to thank also David Scott and John because without them and also Diane Valentine in our marketing team and of course Mayor Grant and City Mayor, because we had an amazing, we had an amazing turnout. Now our next steps, we actually have called, my team has called almost, not all of them yet, because we haven't connected with them all yet, but almost the 205 participants. What we do is we connect with them right after the job fair. And what we ask is first we get some feedback on how was the job fair? Did you like the location? Was the employer's okay? Did you need something different? So once we get that feedback, we then find out with them, what do they need? Do they want a job or do they need another area of Career Source or another area in the city of Boynton Beach that they're looking for? Whether it's another program, whether it's connecting with an educational partner. So once we get that feedback, we'll lead them to either one of our programs or we'll lead them to somewhere in the city that they may, city of Boynton Beach that they may be asking about. Or we will lead them to one of our educational partners. But we will make sure it's what we call a one stop shop. We're not going to let anyone leave either our facility or when we talk to them on the phone or when we send them an email without seeing what they need and how we can help them further. Well, it could be most of what, you know, job readiness, whether it's resume writing, mock surveys, whatever they need, but we want to make sure that everyone that attended the job fair here is actually taking care of, of whatever they need so that we can proceed and have them become self-sufficient and independent and make sure that they reach their goal, whatever their goal may be, whether it's hopefully job placement or any other goal. Another program, if you're a veteran, want to be part of a veterans program or if you're disabled, want to be part of the disabilities program. And then we partner with the city of Boynton Beach to help them find employment. So just to share with you, next step is to make sure that we actually help every individual that came in. We're not going to leave them unattended. And then in addition, we're hoping to find another date in the new, in the near future to hopefully do another great job fair and be able to connect with more individuals in the city and more individuals that actually need placements and needs jobs. Employers are very happy, just to share with you, we got extremely positive feedback from the employers so far. I'm very happy to announce that we got our first four placements today, yes, from the job fair. So, because it takes a while. So I was very glad when I was walking out the door, Jahira, who works for me, one of my most amazing recruiters, he's like, tell them we got the first four, we got the first four. So I told you, we got the first four. So we hope we get more than, of course, more than that, because we did have a lot of great employers. But the job seekers, more importantly, amazing feedback. They love the job fair, they love the employers. They said there was something in it for everyone. It was very inclusive and very diverse. We had all different levels of jobs in the, with the employers and we had a diverse community. We made sure we, we, thanks to David Scott, John and Diane, and let's not forget marketing, we made sure that it was very inclusive, that everybody was welcomed. So thank you so much for the city of, to the city of Boynton Beach, to Mayor Grant, David Scott and your wonderful team. John, we couldn't do it without you, we appreciate it. We look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Oh, Vice Mayor.
I'm really, really excited about the job fair and the results. I, I think it's on the right track and headed in, in the right direction. I really want to commend our staff. But in addition to our staff, there's also people who are working behind the scenes in the community to get the word out, to, to get things moving, to help you guys do what you do. And so I want to, you know, don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, you got Troy. You know, and Boynton Strong. I don't know if Tori wants to say anything about the direction we're headed in. But I would like to, like to hear from you, if you don't mind. Just because I know you had a lot to do with this. I know that you were out there shaking the cages and the bushes and everything else to, to help make this happen. So I really want to commend you on what you've done. Tori, would you come?
Thank y'all. Thank y'all, the city of Boynton Beach for recognizing my work. I appreciate it. You know, that same day, me and the mayor made a video and it reached out to a thousand people about jobs in the community. And I, I took like 12 people myself who came with me. Five of them got jobs. That is pretty good. Couldn't get nobody to sign up for the FBI, so you know. But other than that though, you know, it was pretty good. We got the word out, you know, we reached the ones we could reach, you know, hopefully. Other people get hired as well. You know, we do, like I said, man, Boynton Strong, we want the smaller instances in Boynton, but we do a lot of work. We keep our feet to the ground with the help of Minister Bernard Wright. He helps us as well, we help each other, you know? And we're going to continue to work, man. And like I said, we kind of, you know, want to know when the city needs stuff market. Y'all know how to reach us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, just very briefly, thank you to all of you for being a partner with us. Dr. DuGoy and, and team here, if you could send us, once you're finished collecting all that feedback, send us just a brief report, you know, I, we'd, we'd love to know what kind of comments people are making so we can make the next one better and more effective. So that's going to be instrumental for the future, so thank you.
You got to come back to the microphone, sorry.
That I want, I forgot to mention that they loved, we had Creole translators, we had American Sign Language translators and Spanish speaking translators. And, and some of the employers were actually hiring on the spot. A couple of our Creole population of the job seekers were hired on the spot and they were so excited because there was someone there that was able to communicate and they were able to get jobs on the spot. So just wanted to share.
And I also want to mention that we can have a weekly partnership with Career Source at our library. We've been doing that for, I think, no, like almost over six months now. And so that's, it's from like nine to four. We have someone here in the library that provides one-on-one training. All you have to do is you don't need an appointment, however it's suggested, to come in, sign up. They'll ask you to register with Employee Florida and that's how you get someone to assist you in getting a position here in Palm Beach County. Okay. Now we'll move on to public audience if there's no other speakers for announcements. I'll ask Yuri, if you don't mind, to have people have the ability to ask questions or raise their hand and we will go with the people in the audience first.
Good evening.
Yes, Mayor, I've enabled the options for public participation in GoToWebinar. As a reminder, participants joining this meeting via GoToWebinar can request to speak by clicking on the raise hand option in the GoToWebinar interface and will be unmuted at the appropriate time. Or they can type their question into the question section of the GoToWebinar interface and their question will be addressed at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd also like to mention to that individual speakers will be limited to a three minute presentation. Please state your name and address first and I will begin the timer after you state your address.
David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane, Arfair City. I would like to talk about the significance of having an election in March of 2022 for District Four's commissioner. Any other method would be voter suppression. The Florida statute that references electors and elections, which contains the resign to run law, also has a chapter 99.012, which speaks to the effective date of resignation. If Mr. Penzerga in fact is going to run for mayor, he is legally required to resign 10 days before the first day of filing for the March 2022, March 2022 city elections. The key is the effective date as referenced in chapter 99.012. It gives the candidate, and in this case, Mr. Penzerga, broad discretion as to when the effective date can be. Going to talk about three scenarios, real possibilities, not conspiracy theories of what can happen. Scenario one, Penzerga resigns when he's legally required to do, which is 10 days prior to the first day of filing or even before that, and makes the effective date the date that is 10 days prior to filing or an earlier date. Then there will be an election in District Four in March of 2022, thus no voter suppression. Scenario two, Penzerga resigns 10 days prior to the first day of filing and makes the effective date after the last date of filing or a date that allows for the current commission to have enough meetings left to appoint the replacement commissioner. Thus no election in District Four, that's voter suppression. Scenario three, Penzerga resigns 10 days prior to the first day of filing and makes the effective date the day before the election, which allows for the new commission to appoint the replacement commissioner for District Four. Again, no election for the district, that too is voter suppression. So I ask you, which is the scenario that serves the voters of District Four the best? The voters of District Four should choose their commissioner, not a majority of this commission, or a new commission? The members of this commission should publicly urge you to do the right thing for the voters of District Four, Mr. Penzerga. So I ask you, and the voters of District Four ask you, when is your effective date going to be? The one that the voters of District Four, so that they can choose their commissioner or one that allows for voter suppression? The key is the effective date of your resignation. I wonder how one, how does one budget their integrity? If you don't do the right thing, you'll have none. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I wanted to announce that my charity, which we've been blessed that City Manager Lori Laveria has, has attended one of our meetings before or one of our lunches. We are choosing Boynton Beach to be one of our tree project partners. We are having a project called A Walk in the Forest and we are donating trees to five different groups around the world. And Boynton Beach and West Palm Beach will be our two local partners. So I wanted to let you guys know, I know Rebecca knows and I've talked to community greening all along. I wasn't sure if it filtered up to you yet or not, Lori. Okay, number two, I want to say I am once again here asking for holiday street lighting. I have been talking about this for almost as long as Lori and Commissioner Vice Mayor Hay have been around, that we need to be doing what they do in Europe and every street or major intersection has a different style of lighting. And I will be happy to send out copies of photos once again, if you don't have them from the last couple of times I've sent them out, because I truly believe we need to be, I have a unique identity for each intersection or each street. Like we should have unique lighting coming off of Woolbright, Boynton Beach Boulevard and Gateway. We should have Ocean Avenue and MLK having distinctive lighting. I remember being a kid and there was always distinctive lighting at each of these streets. And I'm seeing heads nodding, you guys remember it too. We can go back to that and we should be doing that. It would enhance our, our city, it enhanced the beauty and it would enhance the neighborhood pride. Because you could say, oh, this street has, you know, bells or this street has angels or, you know, whatever you want to do. you know, whatever you want to do. Um, so that was just my thought, that we need to go back to doing this, and that's my plug once again, after all these years. And third of all, and this has come up because people keep asking me, where are our former mayor photos? I should not be walking in and not see my dad on the wall. I have people reaching out to me on Facebook going, how come I don't see your dad's picture when I go in? Where the heck are they? Where are our mayor photos? And you are going to want your picture up someday, so it's it's time to get our photos back up. It's the construction is over. You know, there's plenty of line down here that you can line them up against the wall or put them around the top or whatever you want to do. But um, we need to have all of our mayor photos back up again. And um, please know that people do reach out and talk to me about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I don't think this commission has had their group photo as we used to have in the in front of the city chambers.
Couldn't get a photographer to come, so I'll have to, I'll talk to Eleanor. I think, I know one of the things we're trying to, like the frames that were up in the old chain, they're they're just all different, and I I think we wanted to try to give, reframe everything so it looks better and more updated. I'm sorry. So let me check, because I I know that's just a monumental time consumer and it's just probably not. It got to get it done, but it hasn't yet.
The fact is, is like unless the frame is broken, it's a sign of the times because we are 100 years old. And so those frames could be 80, 70 years old. So instead of trying to
Let me find out. I honestly haven't talked to staff on that in a while. Find out what the status is.
And so, yeah, okay, so we'll maybe get an update on that one. Mr. Orr.
Um, Tori Orr, 106 North 7th Avenue. You know, I I liked the job fair so much and I was like, uh, well, I'm going to go ask them, like, the next time they do it, can we do it at the Carolyn Sims Center? You know, then they were going to do it quarterly. They're going to do it quarterly. Can we do it there? Can we do it like all the, like everywhere, not not just? When we did it one time at the Eze Hester, then we did it down here. It was good. So I think next time we do it at the Carolyn Sims. And um, you know, I was just asking that. That's it.
Yeah, the the benefit of the Arts and Cultural Center is because of the size. Um, they don't have a facility that big at Carolyn Sims that is as big as the gymnasium. They had over 20 employers. That that wouldn't fit necessarily in the Carolyn Sims. So uh, you know, there might be a specific pointed um career fair for the Carolyn Sims. Uh, or, you know, with the gymnasium over at Ezel Hester. But I think we need a bigger space than Carolyn Sims provides.
All right, cool.
Bishop Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, Robbie Wales Foundation, 713 Northwest Second Street. I'd just like to know an update on uh the money for these speed bumps and when we're going to start trying to get these speed bumps. And about this marketing that we were talking about, we talked about Boynton Strong, Tori, and Bernard Wright Ministries. Uh, when will we get a follow-up on getting a meeting about that so we can solidify that? I mean, it sounds good.
As for the the speed bumps, and I was mentioning in District Two.
Yes.
Um, you'd have to get an update from our city engineer to see where that is in the capital improvement plan. Um, as for the the funding, you know, uh, you know, I provided uh $50 out of my own pocket to to encourage Mr. Orr to help promote. Um, I felt it was very beneficial if the the Vice Mayor uh stated that without knowing that I provided him those funds. Um, and so that's something that I mentioned it at the last city commission meeting, that we need to start, you know, promoting the the events with the influencers because I feel like it is advantageous for the marketing budget that it is versus just using the uh, the print media or our own social media or the the billboards. It's kind of encompassing everything. However, that is my position, not necessarily the the position of the city commission.
I heard you, but I still ain't heard nothing. Not in respect to what we were talking about, putting us in that budget, you understand, and and being, you know, in marketing. I heard what you said about partnering and that, but you haven't gone any further. I just heard a lot of words then and gave me no answer.
Correct. The the aspect of it is, is that this city commission would need to direct the city manager to include influencers.
I know it's both been $50,000 in the budget and we do something of that nature.
Like I said, it would have to be coming from the city commission to try to direct the city manager to uh put uh influence as part of the marketing budget.
You sound like a lawyer.
Thank you.
Just like one. Y'all go round the board. But at any rate, from the real issue, we'll get that straight. We'll have some privacy.
All right. Mr. McNolley.
Uh, hi, Ernest McNolley, 710 Northeast 7th Street, uh, condo 407, Boynton Beach. I haven't noticed the city lawyer here in a few meetings.
We have Shauna Bridgeman from his off, from the Gordon Cheriff office.
You have who?
We have Shauna Bridgeman as our city attorney tonight.
Tonight?
Correct.
Sir, we have several city attorneys.
For the last four or five meetings, is he still the city lawyer, uh, Cheriff?
We do not have a specific city lawyer. He is not employed by the city of Boynton Beach. He is his own law practice.
That's great news. Thank you. I didn't know that. I thought he was the official city lawyer.
No, we do not.
That is fantastic news. I wanted to start out with, this, the mask mandate is still on. I noticed when I come in the front building, they, everybody has to have a mask, right? Mayor?
I don't have that answer.
Well, I I think everybody here has a mask. All right. I know there's a sign at the door, you have to have a mask, right? I guess that doesn't apply to everybody. I've been coming here and talking about the collapse of the building in Surfside, Florida, a lot. And the reason is because I know people, not directly but indirectly. My family and I have been coming to Florida forever. Some family live in here and I moved here last year permanently. And then in June 24 of this year, that building collapsed. Of course, me having a lot of experience with real estate condos, city business, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I've been spending thousands of hours on that study, Oprah's films, engineering reports, city reports, Oprah's, everything, everything, everything. And the more we find out about it, the more horrible it is. And I think the epitome is that the mayor was just cited for his own high-rise building, being condemned for having violations of collapsing terraces, broken elevators, and not responding to residents for years. And then the city business, uh, biz, uh, building development officer, who told them in 2018, disregard this $18 million emergent necessary recertification, your building is safe. And then two years later, the board members who quit were on the terrace talking to their husband when the building collapsed. And I'm saying that because my building, where I am, 710 Northeast 7th Street, has similar problems. And this city, this council, and this county won't help me at all.
Thank you. And so Yuri, is there anyone online that has raised their hand or is asking a question?
I see no questions or hands raised at this time, Mayor Grant.
If that is the case, I will now close public comments. And we will move on to administrative. Our first administrative is for Mayor Stephen Grant to distribute $200 of his community support funds to Connect to Greatness, Inc.
I move.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Do believe, uh, I don't know if the Andre or Cassandra are here. I saw them virtually. If they'd like to make any comments, uh, please raise your hand. If not, we will move on to the next. Yep, there you go.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Grant, and thank you to the city of Boynton Beach. Um, last month, September 9th, made our fifth year anniversary. Um, doing Connect to Greatness mentor program in the city of Boynton. And it has been a pleasure with the support that we've gotten uh from the city of Boynton, uh, from the mayor's office, from the police department, and in particular, uh, Boynton Beach Parks and Recs. Um, at this particular time, we are in four different schools in the city of Boynton Beach, serving over 28 young men and their mothers. And we would love to say um that those numbers will continue to grow and it takes a village. And I think that's what we're seeing in the city of Boynton. And we look forward to the continued work and partnerships uh with the city, and we appreciate everything that you guys have done for us thus far.
Yeah, thank you um for what you do to the the city. Um, you know, I just remember the the whole point is that the Connect to Greatness becomes sustainable, that the the students who started in sixth grade were able to help teach the the younger students. And so I I'm pleased to be able to continue to support you and your organization. And I look forward to getting your updates. I was just amazed to hear that you guys took the the kids to Cape Canaveral and learned all about the Space Coast in Florida.
Our pleasure. It was our pleasure.
Thank you. Our next is to approve the quest, request of Mayor Stephen B. Grant to distribute $200 of his community support funds to the Hat Foundation.
I move.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And uh, do we have someone from the Hat Foundation that would like to speak?
Mayor, could you still elaborate on what the Hat Foundation is, just to share some awareness?
Yeah, absolutely. So let me go pull up their request. The funding will be used for the Hat Foundation's 2021 sponsored child program, which gives at-risk children a chance to be part of the Hat Symphony Orchestra, provide at-risk children an opportunity to learn music instruments, be part of a grand and positive experience, and have a better future.
Thank you.
Our next uh request is uh by Mayor Stephen Grant to distribute $200 of his community support funds to Pathways to Prosperity.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I believe we have a Mr. Petty uh on behalf of Pathways to Prosperity and Healthier Boynton Beach.
All right, greetings and to the Mayor Grant, Commissioners and City Manager. Uh, we'd like to say thank you for your contribution. Uh, Pathways to Prosperity is a wonderful organization that provides three uh programs. One is Bridges at Boynton Beach, and they provide parent parental support to ensure that children grow up healthy, safe and strong and are ready to learn when they enter school. They also provide um Circles of Palm Beach County, which focus and addresses issues on poverty and creating up creating pathways to economic stability. And then we have my program, Healthier Boynton Beach. And our goal is to improve the lives of family caregivers in Boynton Beach. Uh, for the month of November, it is National Caregivers Appreciation Month. And for those that are caregivers, um, you know, caregivers go through a lot. And they do a lot for the person that they provide care for. And sometimes they go unnoticed and they don't get the appreciation that they um that is due to them. So each book, each year, this is our fifth anniversary, we're providing the caregiver luncheon at Bim Bon Noodles. And your contribution will go to support that event. So we greatly appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. And um, you know, speaking of this, I know that we have had multiple conversations with the Chevy DTV Foundation, but we want to make sure that if you have, uh, is some of your caregivers or caregivers um need help with the digital equity, um, please inform us and so we can see what we can do to help uh bridge that digital divide uh with the caregiving community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Mr. Petty, I would also request that you ask the city for a proclamation for um November being Caregivers Month. I think that's something we would be happy to do.
Absolutely. We usually do it each year. It'll be done. Thank you.
Awesome.
I like your mask.
Get it.
So approve the request of Mayor Stephen B. Grant to distribute $200 of the community support funds to Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities.
I move. Second.
Everybody. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
We're all eager to help you give money away.
Thank you. Uh, do we have someone from uh Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities here? Or virtually? The funding will be used for a one-year pre-pro Zoom subscription to engage in our sister cities online and an updated banner to be used at community events. Um, I was speaking with, um, I believe the the new uh, no, not the administrator, Sarah, Sarah Salo from our sister city in Rauma, Finland. And I'm going to try to get kind of either a a meeting with the business community with the, from here, to have a conversation with the business community over in Rauma, Finland, kind of to learn what are our best practices, what do people do over on the other side of the the pond, so to speak, and hopefully uh share information from around the world. So thank you. And the last is uh to distribute $200 of the of community support funds to Freedom Shores Elementary.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Uh, this was uh actually given to the Boynton Beach Garden Club, who stated that uh Freedom Shores is going to ultimately end up getting the funds. And so that's kind of where I'm excited to see uh where they are now with their community garden. Speaking with one of the representatives here, the they've already built uh part of it, and so this will continue that. And I'll I'll hopefully bring back uh to the city commission some pictures of that garden. And next, we move on to advisory board position appointments. We have two regular spots on the art advisory board available. We have two applicants for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We have Vice Mayor Hay with one position.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to uh appoint Cheryl Banks to that position.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Uh, next we have uh Commissioner Pennsorger with an appointment.
Yes, I move to appoint Ronnie Hoggins to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We still have two regular and two alternate positions available available for the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. One student, two students, one voting, one not voting, for the Education Youth Advisory Board. Uh, one regular and one alternate available for the Historic Resources Preservation Board. Two alternates available for the Library Board. One regular and two alternates for the Recreation and Parks Board, and one regular for the Senior Advisory Board. That ends administrative. Moving forward to the consent agenda, would uh any of the commissioners like to remove uh an item from the consent agenda? I don't necessarily need to remove an item from the the consent agenda. However, I I have two comments. Uh, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
Oh, never mind. I I did want to take out um. No, never mind. So the the comments that I had is regarding 6A Resolution 21 dash 137. I believe we're uh issuing another nuisance uh lien on a property that we are currently in a lawsuit for. So I'd like to uh get an update, I believe, on 301 West Boynton Beach Boulevard to see where the status of that lawsuit is. Item 6K, um, we're approving a one-year extension of Penn Credit. Uh, I'd like to get an update of how they've been doing. Uh, they've been going on since 2008. So is it time that we issue another RFP RFQ for the following year? Because they are the ones that uh do the debt collection services, uh, you know, and whether do we want to move with an do we want to move with a law firm that can provide more resources than just a debt collection company? In addition, item, what is it, six N, sub-items three, five, and eight, it seems that the equipment over at, I believe, Barrier Free is going to be changed out. You know, my big thing is that, is there an opportunity to salvage some of the equipment and move to another location? Because I know that Varden Park would definitely have, has requested for some sort of playground equipment. And so those are my comments, does any of the commission have any other comments?
Mayor?
Yes?
I wasn't originally planning to make this comment, but since you brought up six A, one of those nuisance abatements, I'm looking at the list here, and I just wanted to disclose that, and I think you may know them, I'm not sure, but both Dr. Genie and Cahawk Go, they're both passed away, I was just at Dr. Go's funeral just the other day, so I'm not sure if it makes any sense trying to collect, you know, a couple hundred dollars, but just wanted to disclose that for the further community. She was a very well-known and popular pediatrician, both doctors.
Well, thank you for that, and so I guess that would give us a, you know, I guess legal would give us an update of what's going on with that property.
Yes.
And so if there's no further comments, may I have a, I have a motion as second, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over a hundred thousand, would anyone like to remove any of these items? Seeing none? May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
My comment would be on item seven C, Hiring Florida Caribbean Architecture. We know that they do great jobs here in our town square building and other aspects, and so just if I could get, or the commission can get updates as the process moves along, just, you know, quarterly or semi-annually emails to see where we're doing with that. Guess quarterly for me, I'm not going to get the semi-annual.
Yeah, prefer the quarterly, too.
All right, thank you. So seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. It's been a while since we've had a public hearing, and now we're moving on to the City Managers' Report Request to Reschedule the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty, ARPA Commission Workshop to December seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. As David said, we got the, didn't expect to get it as soon as we did the draft study from FIU for the external assessment, we just like a little bit of time to be able to build that into our framework for your workshop, so we're just asking to bump it one meeting, give us a chance to get our heads around the information. We're still waiting for actually the data to come in, then to allow us to go ahead and do the workshop, and we think we could do three thirty to five, we don't need to pull you in at three, because I know that's tough on some work schedules, if that's acceptable to you.
I think that would be acceptable, and it's kind of in the senses that we got somewhat of an update tonight, so, you know, maybe, you know, on November sixteenth or November second, you know, whatever, how things are going with the review of the meetings that we've had, just another update from probably on November sixteenth, if we can get update of the meetings over at Fire Station Three.
Sure.
And then on November first, back here in the chambers.
Fine, and then we're going to take all of that for the workshop, so yeah, thank you, that helps us, that gives us a little bit more time we need, but we'll have an update.
All right. And do you need a motion to change the meeting, and is it, I think we do.
Yeah, you do.
So may I have a motion to move the November sixteenth special city commission meeting to December seventh, two thousand twenty-one at three thirty PM?
I move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We got a monthly update from JKM Developers on the Town Square project attached. And in addition, it seems that they are moving forward with an application for a site plan amendment, is that correct?
I know that we are going to hold a pre-app with their planner in the next week or two. Andrew, do you guys have the dates set?
Yeah, Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager of Public Services, yes, we have been in contact with their planner, Josh Nichols, and it looks like we have a meeting tentatively scheduled for this Friday.
Okay, excellent. And then, I guess the next thing is, you gave us a response as well to their updated pursuant to Section six E, and so I guess if we can get and continue to get the updates on this matter, because it is pertinent, how the application meeting goes, whether it's at public or letting us know informally. In addition, I know that it's almost been a year that we've initiated this lawsuit, so I kind of want to get the total number of legal fees, because we've had hiring consultants and other law firms. Any other comments before we move on to legal? Moving on to legal, Propose Ordinance Number twenty-one dash zero-two-six.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Regulations Chapter One, Article Two Definitions, amending Chapter Four, Article Ten Flood Prevention Requirements to Remove Requirements for Manufactured Homes in Flood Hazard Areas and to Adopt Requirements for Accessory Structures, Providing for Applicability, Sufferrability, and an Effective Date.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city commission, staff members of the public, Adam Temple, Director of Development Services. Brief background, for the benefit of members of the public and the commission, the notice, the National Flood Insurance Program Act of nineteen sixty-eight was passed by Congress, which utilizes the Community Rating System, also known as CRS, as a voluntary incentive program to recognize and encourage community floodplain management practices that exceed minimum requirements for CRS communities. Flood insurance rates are discounted for properties located within a municipality as a result of their efforts to enforce floodplain management regulations. In order to maintain consistency with new requirements of FEMA and staff's continued efforts to strive to maximize the city's community rating system, rating, staff is proposing and recommends a few minor updates to the city's floodplain management regulations. These are very, very minor changes through coordination of the State Floodplain Office. We're adopting a new definition of accessory structures that's different from our current zoning regulations. We're removing provisions for and prohibiting the placement of manufactured homes within the special flood hazard areas. It's important to note that there are no manufactured homes within the special flood hazard area in the city, so we recommend removing that provision from the ordinance, and we're also doing some housekeeping items on a few definitions for floodways and editing the definition for market value. It's important to note that our, should the commission decide not to move forward with these recommendations, it would jeopardize our CRS score and would increase the flood insurance rates for properties within the city. Staff, as I mentioned, has been working on these proposed amendments in coordination with the State Floodplain Office, and the Planning and Development Board heard these amendments at the September twenty-eighth Planning and Development Board meeting. Happy to answer any questions. With me, we also have our building official and city's designated floodplain administrator with us as well.
I have no questions, and thank you for doing what you can to save on flood insurance. We do have flood zones, and so I know that we're doing what we can with stormwater maintenance, and part of that is helping our urban canopy, because a tree helps reduce the amount of stormwater that goes onto the ground at one time.
Motion to approve. And if I could, if I could just add in the backup, I didn't want to spoil the surprise, but there's some good information in the backup about our CRS score that will be, I believe, presented next month to the commission. That's all.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Yep, thank you. Is there any other comments from the board or the commission? Any comments from the public?
Hi, Ernest McNolly, seven ten northeast Seventh Street, Boynton Beach. I live in a building that's forty-four years old, and most of it's in the flood zone, and when I purchased, I guess you know, at closing, a city has to give transfer title approval, a board and an association has to say, as far as they know, there's no major problems, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then, of course, the seller, in my case, it was the board president, has to sign a document that they know of no flooding, foundation, building problems that are severe, so that you can close, it's sort of the right to know. And so I bought and closed, and then I find out that there's all kinds of violations with no seawall, some illegal marinas with some big problems with the board for twenty years with lack of repairs, and it's modeling after that building in Surfside. So when I try and deal with the city or Section Four Commissioner on this board, I send in pictures, I talk about things, about flood, flood insurance, how it's affecting our building, how we're getting nowhere with the city, I have gotten not one email reply. I think, Mr. Sarg, you're District Four, right? Is that, is that where I am, at seven ten northeast Seventh Street? Does that, that's not what that means? What does that mean?
You're northeast Seventh Street?
Seven ten northeast Seventh Street.
And that would be District Two.
That's two, so which commissioner has that?
The Vice Mayor.
Oh, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Not bad. I wish you'd stop by during this king tide, you know, it could stand, I ruined a pair of shoes standing in six inches of salt water all over my property and my parking lot, and I can't get any city officials to come out and take pictures. And then the reason I'm up here is because when I bought, and now when I renewed my insurance with State Farm, they said, has your building in your city done anything yet with the flood insurance compliance, because you're right on the intercoastal, and you've got all those problems with the seawall is never put up or down and damaged, your property floods, the foundation, just like that building in South, I said, no, they haven't done anything. So I said, well, what does that mean? Well, it means the same thing, your flood insurance on your condo, instead of being eight hundred a year, is nineteen hundred a year. And I said, well, is there anything I can do about that? They said, no, 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 it's all up to your city and your commissioners. And they said, well, don't they, don't they come out and like interview you and look around and try and figure out why the property next to us, I think it's owned by the city, it's a reserve, and it's got no seawall in front of it? So every time it's high tide and the boats go by, that whole lot floods, and then that flooded salt water comes into our whole property and the property next door. So I'm thinking, wait a minute, how do I get some help here? And I must have sent four hundred emails to this mayor, council, and relative to what I asked you before, it says here right on the thing that you go out, the city attorney is James Cheroff, and then you told me he's not the city attorney. What does it say on the front page? Who's the city attorney? You can't find anything out here, what does it say there?
It says James Cheroff.
That's right, and you told me no, just like you told me, no, you can't do an ordinance to get recertification, and Boca Raton did one. I'm wondering how this commission can keep saying things in public that are not factual. You told me earlier, he's not the city lawyer.
No, 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 we never said that he's not the city lawyer.
I asked you where the city lawyer is, you said he's not the city lawyer.
He is the city lawyer, he is not here, we have his alternate that is here.
Wait a minute, I said he's not here, and he hasn't been here for a lot of meetings, and then you said, well, he's not the city lawyer.
Correct, the city does not have a lawyer, we hired a law firm, however, he's the city's attorney as of record.
You know the front door of this brand-new building, there's a beautiful plaque there? Did you ever see it? Well, it's got all your names on it, and then right below it says, city lawyer, James Cheroff. That plaque is not a fact.
So it's in the senses that, I believe Ms. Bridgeman is a partner for the firm? So are you familiar with how some law firms work, that other lawyers may step in at times?
I'm starting to learn, trust me.
Okay.
Being in Boynton, I'm starting to learn. So here's my question, if he's the primary lawyer, and he's involved with all these lawsuits and all this flood stuff, and like my building and a lot of stuff, and I communicate with him all the time, right? How come he's never here?
I mean, he's been here for thirty years, so.
No, 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 wait a minute, I'm talking about in the last months, since there's been some severe problems after the building collapsed and all the stuff about certifications and stuff, and all of a sudden now, he only responds by email, and now you send an alternate. What good does that do?
So I can tell you that if the city commission decides to get a new city attorney, they can.
They can?
They can.
Is this the new city attorney?
No, we have hired the law firm of Goran Cheroff to be our city attorney. They have stated that James Cheroff from their law firm is going to be our city attorney. That does not state that he can't provide an alternate from his law firm to be the state attorney, to be the city attorney when he is not available.
And so if I've been to the last fifteen meetings and he hasn't been here, is he like on a leave or something?
So that aspect is that, yes.
Mayor, perhaps I could answer the question. Okay, I am in attendance virtually tonight, and I was in attendance virtually at the last meeting, thank you for checking the record, I've been at most of the meetings, if not all the meetings, with a few exceptions when I do take either a vacation or have an illness, in which case, in most cases, Deputy City Attorney Shawna Bridgeman fills in that seat for me. But as you could hear me, I am in attendance, and I've been since the inception of the meeting, as I always am, when I cannot be physically present. The speaker, of course, emails me on a daily basis as the city attorney, so he does know that I do exist, not just virtually, but in the real world as well.
Can you please state your name for the record?
You. On the screen, where is he?
Mr. Cheroff?
Are you referring to me? This is James Cheroff, and I am attending the meeting virtually.
And what is your law firm?
Goran Sheriff Duty in Ezreal, PA.
For Lauderdale, correct? Oh, great, okay. All right, so now we're clear. So now we have a law firm right in Dayton-Broward, where all these problems with these buildings are, and we're trying to get relief for our city, we're going to deal with the same engineers and lawyers from right in the middle of the problem, and I'm wondering why, when I send emails to you, to the commissioners, to the county, and to your city lawyer, right? And I say, why you, you're right there, you're part of developers who've been doing this, we have problems with floods, you haven't solved anything, you're here for thirty years, when can we get a new lawyer? And you're leaving, so can you help us get a new lawyer?
I can.
You're gonna, will you help?
I will try.
All right, I don't think I have anything else to say. That's very important, because, because we got to deal with this flood stuff, you know that salt water is flooding a lot of the city and things, the building department with this lawyer, they're like, they don't want to talk. So you're going to work before you leave on getting a new law firm for this?
I would, you know, excuse me, but yes, as I stated earlier, I can present it to the city commission, and the city commission's ability to choose a new law firm.
Or keep the same one.
Or keep the same one, or hire one for, that is a city attorney.
Yeah, and the other thing is, there's an election coming up, right, for mayor?
This has nothing to do with the motion on the floor.
Because this mayor is not dealing with the flood, so I'm hoping who you tell us to vote for knows how to deal with a flood. What do you mean it's got nothing to do with it?
All right.
I'm not, I'm not being. I'm not, I'm not being rude, you know that.
I understand, and this is an ordinance. Correct. And so you, there's no time limit. So is there any other things that you would like to say?
But you, you know, I'm tired of standing in six inches of salt water at my house. And there's 28 condominiums there, and who knows what it's doing to our foundation? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
So we have a first and a second. Is there any other comments on the current ordinance? We have a roll. Ain't none? May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz is absent. Commissioner Romulus?
Present. I mean, yes. Sorry.
Commissioner Penzera?
Yeah.
Otis Ford?
Thank you. Sheriff, your microphone is still live.
I think I've got the next item.
Mayor, before we move forward, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
You know, we've all heard it many, many times. The claim has been made that staff has not visited the site. Staff inspected the site. Is there a genuine problem? Have we looked at it? This is what I need to know, what all of us need to know.
Adam will answer your question. The answer is yes.
And we have addressed this issue multiple times already. But I'm happy to hear it again.
Commissioner Penzera, to your, to your question, resounding yes. Multiple people have been onto the site. Your building official has been on the site. I have personally been on the site. I've got other staff that has personally been on the site as well.
And your findings, Adam?
I'll let, I'll let our building official discuss his findings.
And then, Mr. Temple? Quick question is that are we working with the county regarding their ordinance regarding condominiums?
Yes, sir. Mr. Koontzman, our building official, is on the technical subcommittee for that effort. It's my understanding that there was an item at the Board of County Commissioners today to move, get direction to move forward with their countywide program, which is something, as I mentioned to you, to the commission a few months ago, that we will be bringing for the commission's consideration.
Thank you. Temple, is there any type of timeline at this point for coming up with something? Or?
I would, yeah, Vice Mayor Hay, I would have to see what took place at the Board of County Commission today and through John, Mr. Koontzman, his meetings with the, with the county building officials. But I couldn't, I couldn't imagine it being much longer than a next month or two, or first reading is brought before the commission.
Mr. Koontzman? I believe the question is, what's been going on and what are we planning?
My name is John Koontzman. I am the building official for the city of Boynton Beach. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. At this point, I have been in part of the building recertification process with Palm Beach County, the League of Cities, and all the building officials in Palm Beach County. We have drafted a document that has been vetted by attorneys, engineers, inspectors from not only Palm Beach County, but Dayton-Broward County. And there are some municipalities that have moved forward with their own building recertification program. This is true. But Palm Beach County's, our draft, we feel, is head and shoulders above what Dayton-Broward County have in place right now. We feel that our document, which is going before the commission tonight in Palm Beach County for their first reading, will be successful, and we will have to go to the building commission with it. And then, when it comes back, then we will present it to, we'll make whatever changes we need to make that are unique to Boynton Beach. And then we'll present that to the commission, and then we will send that to the building commission as well for their approval, and then we'll adopt the code. It's going to be a couple of months.
And the building commission is our planning and zoning advisory board?
No, the building commission is the state of Florida.
Okay.
Okay.
And so?
Anything that we do has to be, when we make any revisions to Chapter 1, which this will be in Chapter 1, we have to present, to present that to the building commission, and then they will either say yes or no, and then it will come back to us, and then that's when I will bring it to you.
And then, would it still come in front of the planning and zoning advisory board?
I do not believe it would need to go to the planning and zoning board.
And there's every anticipation that the legislature's going to be having serious discussions about this statewide.
And so it's, it's something that we are monitoring the situation, and we have not found anything that rises to a level of hazardous of any of our condominiums here in Boynton Beach.
I have been out to Harbor Hall 1, the condo that Ernest has been talking about. I met him out there, and I explained to him that there are things that I can do, and there are things that I cannot do. Okay? I cannot force somebody to provide me a building recertification. I have nothing to lean on. But what I can do is I can cite for items that I do see. Okay? There were some vertical cracks in the walls in two corners. There was a few balconies that looked like they can use some repair. There are some cracks, and there are a little bit of rust coming out of those cracks. I required the condo association to provide me a structural analysis by a threshold engineer, because this is a threshold building. I received that letter from the threshold inspector, and he did say that there are several balconies that knew to have work, but nothing is an imminent danger. The vertical cracks, he determined that it was only stucco. So those can be repaired by virtually anybody. I've been in communication with the HOA, and they have told me that today there was an engineer, threshold engineer, going out there to make, to do a survey on the balconies, because they do want to repair the balconies. They don't want that to get out of hand. So they are moving forward with that. And that's why the, the threshold engineers were out there today, taking notes, taking pictures, and coming up with a game plan to repair them.
And it's the, the association that is ultimately responsible?
Yes.
And so, thank you for that information.
Questions? Have a great evening.
Thank you for allowing us to provide that additional commentary. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
No, you may not. Consider, we're moving on to item 12B. Consideration of plaintiff's settlement offer to the city in action to accept, reject, or make counteroffer in the case of Natasha Clements, plaintiff, for City of Boynton Beach, Florida, Florida Municipal Corporation defendant.
Thank you, Mayor. James Sheriff, city attorney. I'll handle this item, if that's okay with the commission. The city is involved in this litigation. I think the entire commission is aware of the facts and circumstances of the pending litigation. In the case, we have received a demand for judgment, which is another terminology for offer of judgment. For $80,000, the item on tonight's commission agenda is your consideration whether or not to accept that offer, reject that offer, or make a counteroffer, if you prefer, or alternatively, to do nothing at this particular point in the litigation, in which case the litigation would continue. In the last several days, we have communicated with plaintiff's attorney, and it, to make clear that the demand for judgment is in this case only, the pending case only, regarding the depiction of the plaintiff in a mural and the modification of that image, which gave rise to her claim for defamation. She does have one additional potential claim against the city arising from an EEOC complaint of discrimination. We're told that she will settle both cases for a total of $100,000. So if the city commission wants to discuss a total settlement and a release that we would receive back to make certain there is no other pending litigation, that would cost the city commission $100,000 per the current demand. I would ask that any motion, if there is a motion tonight, be specific with respect to the dollar amount that we are authorized to settle the case for.
And Jim, you received that offer in writing from the plaintiff's attorney?
Yes, by email, yes.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else want to like the commission to begin, or may I start? Okay. You know, the, the facts surrounding this case are of art. You know, the, the fact is, is as you read the complaint, is that Natasha Clements is a native person here in Boynton Beach. And so the removal of her image from the city of Boynton Beach is what hurts the most because of her working here, you know, growing up here, working as started the Parks and Recreation Department, moving to the firefighter, fire department, and then going from entry level to deputy fire chief. You know, the, the fact is, is that, you know, I know who Natasha Clements is. Back in January of 2020, we worked together for the, the day of service, where we were picking up trash along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. She was always there at many of the city events, and the, you know, my position is that we accept the offer of $100,000 so that we can move forward. And in addition is that I don't think the, the, putting back the mural as it was supposed to be is enough. You know, we have created a new urban orchard along the, the same places that Natasha was picking up trash, and so I would want to rename that urban orchard after her because of her dedication and contribution to the, the city of Boynton Beach. Because that is something that's going to have the, the legacy of what she means to the city as part, what she means to the city and what she means to, to me because of what she has done to, for the city of Boynton Beach. So those are, those are my comments, and hopefully this commission feels similarly. Yes, Vice Mayor?
I, I do support what you just stated. I, I think, well, Tasha Clements goes a little bit deeper with me. She grew up with my daughter, Keisha, went to school together. And so I've been watching her over the years as she's grown. I think we all learned a lesson through this endeavor, and I would hope and pray that from a city standpoint and from the official standpoint, that we don't go back to facial recognition again and put facias up on a mural like we did. God forbid that they commit some type of weird crime of some kind, and, and we would not want to have that image. So if we go this route again, let's just make sure that the faces, I, I would not even use a picture again. That's, that's not my idea of commemorating some, someone. I would like to see some type of memorial, some type of, something to recognize the contributions of our first, in this case, our first black female deputy chief. And I, I think this has been a misfortune. Unfortunately, it's been something that, that happened. We, we, I am proud of the way we handled it so far. If you recall, it was taken down immediately. The person in charge was dismissed and fired, or whatever you want to call it, and, and we've made some adjustments. So I say, whatever we can do to, to help Tasha, and if she agrees to what she has presented, I support that wholeheartedly, so that this city and Tasha could move forward. Thank you.
That's Commissioner Penzera.
Mayor, I don't really need to repeat everything that has been said, but, you know, I'll give my bullet point, and it's this. You know, what happened to Chief Clements was wrong. It was disgusting. She didn't deserve any of it. And what happened is an affront, an offense, not just to her, but also for the whole community. We all know this to be true, and that's why I'm looking forward for her to be made whole and for all of us to move forward. So Chief Clements, you know, I got to know you a little bit, and I'm sorry that this happened to you. No one deserves any of this, and when you do it to one, you're doing it to all of us. So I want you to be made whole, and I want you to move forward, because this was one chapter, but it doesn't need to be the only chapter. So thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Mr. Romulus, do you like to have comments?
Sure. So my, my comments, I'm going to keep them bottled somewhat, so I don't get too emotionally invested in here. But, you know, Chief Clements is, is not just an employee or a former employee to me in the city. She is a friend. She is somebody that I consider a mentor that I look up to, and she is somebody that, that I definitely feel has set a precedent for what it looks like to be a black woman in this country. She is, I think, doing tremendously well, because she's already landed amazingly well in her new role as the police chief and, and, fire chief, I'm sorry, in a forest park or college park, I forget what the name of, of this, Forest Park. So I know she's already fine. And, you know, to, to kind of say, say a few, few words, I don't think, nothing, no amount of money can make this situation right or make her whole, because with, with all the things that occurred here, it's not a monetary settlement. I've, I've said this, you know, in, in our sessions, and I'm saying it here publicly. You know, because we live in a capitalist, capitalistic society, the best way that we can say we're sorry is by, you know, giving these funds. But there's so much more that should be said. And I also want to make sure that we iterate the fact that though this particular agenda item is focusing on Chief Clements, Chief Clements was not the only person who was hurt in this situation. We have former fire chief Glenn Joseph. We have several other people who were affected by these decisions that were made by people who were inconsiderate of the feelings of how blurring or effacing, or whatever the terms were that were used to make these faces less recognizable, would, would affect and would cause a long-term impact on these individuals, not just by the very virtue of erasing their face, but erasing their history and their impact and their legacy here on this city. So there is a lot to learn from this situation. It is not just that, let's not put faces on walls or murals again. It is the very fact that we as a community and we as a society need to be aware of how cultural differences and biases affect each other. That's really what this is about. As a black woman who has been underestimated, underappreciated, put in boxes that I did not belong, I understand full-heartedly, maybe more than anyone up here, the situation that Chief Clements had to endure. And I could even say that I still probably don't understand exactly what she's gone through, because she's lived a lot longer than, she's lived life a lot longer than I have, and if she's, and she's gone through it a lot more, I'm sure, than I have. But what I can say is... more, I'm sure than I have, but what I can say is profoundly, personally, from the bottom of my heart, as a black woman speaking to another black woman, you stand on the shoulders of giants, and this situation does not define you or any other black woman that is in a leadership role. Let this be a message to those out there who think that it's okay to erase the history and the legacy that black women and black people have in this country. Let this be a message, this will not stand, we will not allow for our hard work and our blood, sweat, and tears that we pour out every single day to make this country and this community and this world run. We will not be erased, so that is all I have to say. I do wholeheartedly support the motion tonight. And, and I will close my comments with making the motion that we accept the, that we accept the settlement to offer a hundred thousand dollars to the plaintiff in this decision.
A second, that motion?
That is for all claims on the city, is that correct?
But that would be for all claims.
Is there any other comments from the public?
Mayor, let me, may I, just want to make sure this is clear, that means all claims pending or threatened, correct?
Or alleged, I wouldn't use the word threatened. And that is, that is what you, you received in writing, correct?
That's correct, that, that would resolve all claims pending or threatened.
Okay, so seeing no public comments, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, we'll get that wrapped up officially as quickly as possible.
I did make the, the second comment regarding recognition of Latasha Clemmons for the, the urban orchard, I'd like to have a, a motion to see if she would want that honor in the city of Boynton Beach.
Mayor, I just want, Mayor, may I intervene? I just want to point out that's a non-agended item, and that should be added to future agenda.
Not a problem.
We can add that, I'll make a motion to add that to future item.
All right, do I have a second? Yes, all right, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those oppose, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. The two other future agenda items that I would want to talk about is the Citizens Review Board. I'd like to have that discussion, I believe, in, on December seventh, that the community and the commission has an opportunity to speak with the community. So may I have that motion?
Sorry, what's the motion, sir?
So to have a discussion regarding the Citizens Review Advisory Board, I can forward you the language that I received from the Palm Beach County Justice Association, however, I would like to, to make changes to that, because I feel that it is currently in its current form negative to the police department, and I want to create a better communications between the, the community and the police department, so that the community feels that it's not only internal affairs that you have to file a complaint with, that if there's something that you don't like, that the police officer does, you have the ability to get more information why. I think it's also important that our citizens have, you know, a presentation on the, the quarterly statistics of crime. In addition, I would want to make sure that our police are being commended for the, the service that they're doing, and find new ways for the police to interact with the, the community. As you may know, we have plenty of coffees with the cop, lunch with the law enforcement officer, the cones with the cop, and so I would want to continue that sort of dialogue, but on a more permanent basis, so this is something that I would think that on a quarterly basis, the, the public, the appointees from the, the commission and the, the chief would meet, so that they would have an open dialogue, so that we can move forward to help continue to reduce crime.
What, are you asking that this be put on agenda for our next meeting to be?
I, I said, I'm asking for December seventh, so that way, if the, the commission decides that they don't want to have this conversation, they have the ability to remove it from the future agenda.
Okay.
And that's kind of where I want to, because the, this topic came in front of me because of the Palm Beach County Justice Association, and I stated I do not like their language as stated, because.
You're, you're good, no need to reiterate, we got it, so December seventh is fine.
Thank you. In addition, I spoke with one of our breweries, Copper Point, this past week, in regards to their request to get a, you know, to have, I guess, food preparation in their facility, because they're having issues now that after the pandemic, the people coming to the, the brewery are not as, as high as it once was, and so they are looking for other ways to increase revenue. Most people have heard that Do South is leaving in December, we lost Devour just as the pandemic hit, I think, you know, we, we pride ourselves as being a, having a brewery district, and we're now, we're losing our breweries, so I want to see what this, what our staff can do to help promote the beverage and food manufacturing industries, so that we can attract more, and so that was my comment, and then one of the things I discussed with them was canned water, and so it was very interesting having a conversation, I don't know if we're, I'm ready to put it on future gens just yet, but being able to have Boynton Beach canned water for us, because, you know, one of the things I don't like is the, the plastic bottles, and so this is something that we could do for our Go Green initiative and for sustainability, so that's something that, not necessarily that we put on future gens today, but I did want to make it known that we need, I think we need to do more for the beverage and food manufacturing industry here in the city of Boynton Beach.
Mayor, we've been working with Matt, it's been probably a good month now, when he's reached out to us, his staff has, is taking a look at the language in our current code, it presents some challenges, and we are coming up with some solutions.
Okay.
We, we support it fundamentally, it's just, we've got to do some text amendments, so, yeah, we're, we're working with them.
Thank you. And so I believe that is it, unless someone else has further comments or questions? If not, Yuri, do you mind providing us with the closing?
Mayor Grant, there is a hand raised, I just noticed.
I did not know that. There is a hand raised?
Yes, well, there was, it went down.
Okay.
Okay, I'll read out the, the outro then. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel, links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting, be safe and have a great night.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, good night, everyone.